Hi everyone, welcome to the Philosopo Podcast. I am the head Philosopo here, my name is Jiggy Junior the Philosopo. And we're here with the majority floor leader of the Cebu City Council Raymond Alvin Garcia. Hi Raymond, how can you do?
Mayong adlaw, Jiggy, and may adlaw sa atong mga suking paminaw.
Thank you so much Raymond for doing this. I know you have a lot of interviews lined up and you have a lot of things. You have your hands full. I really wanted to take this time to interview you because of so many factors, especially the storm that is brewing on the internet right now. There seems to be Raymond, I've been reading and I've been studying what people are saying online, especially on Facebook. And there seems to be a perceived failure of the use of funds, a perceived failure of the enforcement of COVID-19 protocols like social distancing, wearing of masks and washing of hands. And also there's a failure, perceived failure of leadership from above. Of course, I'm using the word perceived because all of this I just gathered from the internet and you know how unreliable the internet can be. So I think I would like to listen straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, from you. And of course, before I let you speak, all of this is brought about primarily triggered by the fact that our our status has been downgraded to ECQ, back to ECQ. So I guess would be the eye of the storm. Go ahead councillor.
Well, let's talk first about when you say the eye of the storm is the downgrading from GCQ to ECQ. The basis for the downgrade according to the IATF is really the increase in the number of cases that we are seeing. But then again, I have always been, you know, I've been always saying that if you don't want an increase in the cases, it's very simple, the solution is just don't test, don't test, that's it. You look at our neighboring cities, municipalities and provinces, they tell you, hey, we have zero cases or less than 10 cases. How many tests have you done? Also 10. Out of 5, out of 10 people, 5 get positive. So they only have 10 tests and then they have 5 cases. But we, Jiggy, we already have a total of about 12,000 to 15,000 tests. Counting and counting, these are swab tests, these are PCR tests. And not to mention that we have already done about 20,000 to 30,000 rapid tests throughout Cebu City. So that is how, this is how aggressive the city is, the city leadership is in finding where is the virus? Because this is the first thing that you have to do, you have to find the virus, you have to find those people infected. After finding them, then you have to contact trace. After contact tracing, then you treat them so they become better. Cebu City is the most aggressive city or municipality in the entire Philippines that's doing that. That's why our numbers.
When you say aggressive, do you mean we have the most number of tests in the entire Philippines?
That's correct, that's correct. By far, I would even say in the top cities, we are testing 10 times more than Manila. And we are testing even 100 more times than any municipality in the entire Philippines. So that's why our cases are going up because we are actually finding where our positive cases are. You know, it's like going to war, going to a battlefield. And when you go to a battlefield, you go to a battlefield at night, you may have a gun, but you don't know where to shoot. Because you don't know where your enemy is, the enemy just keep shooting on you, but you don't know where because it's nighttime. But now, once you start testing, then you know where your enemy is, then it becomes, then it's likened now to a situation where you're going to war, you're going to battlefield, but this time it's daytime, so you can see them. That's why there is a misconception, it's actually a double edged sword. The cases are rising because we are testing. And why are we testing? It's because we want to find where our enemy is, where the virus is, where the prevalence is. So that's, that's just the long and short of it, simply stated.
I overheard from the Cebu City government camp that Cebu City is the most ready municipality city in the Philippines to address this pandemic. Raymond, do you think we are, instead of being perceived as lagging behind, it looks like we're ahead of everyone else and thus the ECQ reading, the ECQ upgrading, so to speak, or downgrade, whatever way you want to look at it. So does this mean that the other cities who have not tested as much as Cebu City have had tested for the past few months, will see a rise in incidence of COVID-19 positive cases if they only had the number of testing that we had in Cebu City?
That's correct, that's correct. And we maintain that if you look at our recovery rate, we're about 50%, again better than the national average. Our death rate, mortality rate is only 1%, again better than the national average of 4%. You just don't look at the writing cases, you also look at the recovery because it will tell you how efficient and effective your interventions are medically when it comes to COVID-19. So if you have a high recovery rate, it means that the city is doing well as regards the intervention, the medical intervention. At the same time, our death rate will show that again, the city is doing well because our interventions are making the COVID positive live longer because it's only 1% and the national average is 4%. See, so for every 4 people that die in Manila or the entire Philippines, only one person dies with us, for us. So we are doing the right things. And I still maintain that we are the most prepared. Why do I say that? At the start, we bought already all of these testing kits, 30 or even we donated about, we have about 30,000 test kits for PCR. And there was a donation from the Dino family of another 22,000. We have 50,000, even 60,000 swab, these are PCR testing kits. And we also purchased another 50,000 rapid test kits for our serological survey. We are the only city with Mandawi and Lapu-Lapu that did a serological survey in the entire Philippines. Of course, Australia is doing it, the United States now is doing, and all other major cities, first world countries are doing what we are doing. So that's why we are saying that we are the most prepared now. Infrastructure, again, we are the only city in the entire Philippines that has 4 quarantine negative pressure centers. There's one in Sacred Heart School for Boys, the old Sacred Heart. There's another one in the North Reclamation Area and one that just opened at the IEC Convention Center at the back of Flanders. And there's one more in the Bigfoot in SRP. So we are the only one that has 4 quarantine centers. So again, I beg to disagree with the others that are there saying that we are not ready. We are ready. We are the most prepared because of all of these interventions that the city government is doing now. Now, why are our cases rising? Not only because they're testing, but because we need the cooperation of our constituents. They still have to do their part, they still have to practice social distancing, they still have to stay at home, they still have to wash their hands, they still have to wear masks so that the virus does not spread. Remember, the virus is spread by people. So the more the people interact, the more the people don't practice social distancing, the more the people don't wear masks, the more the people do not wash their hands. That's the reason why the virus spreads. That's why we need the cooperation of the people because we here in government, we are already doing our part, we are already providing the facilities, we are already purchasing all the equipment necessary to fight this COVID-19.
So councillor, the primary purpose of it, Jiggy. The primary purpose of a lockdown or quarantine is to make sure that our healthcare system do not get overwhelmed. How are our hospitals now? Do we have hospitals? I heard that Vicente Soto Hospital is already full. Give us an update on what is going on as far as the hospital beds are concerned.
Okay, before this week, our hospitals were only allocating 15% of their total bed capacity for COVID patients. So if my hospital, for example, has a capacity of, bed capacity of 200 patients, they are only allocating 20 beds. So that if the 21st patient of COVID comes, they will say, go home, we cannot accommodate you, we're full. That's because they're only allocating 20 beds for COVID-19. And there are 180 beds that's empty. And that is being, that is being practiced by all private hospitals. The government hospitals are more lenient, their bed capacity for COVID is more than just 15%. So what did the government do? When we found out about this situation, what did the government do? We called on all these private hospitals, "Paliho, grang, increase your bed capacity, not only 10, 15%, increase it more." And that's not only, I'm talking of normal bed capacity, it's even worse with ICU bed capacity. So if a hospital has 30 ICU bed capacity, they will only allocate 2 or 3 for COVID patients. That's why they are saying that they are overwhelmed because their bed capacity for COVID is miniscule compared to their actual bed capacity for all sicknesses. Now, we appeal to them, "Paliho, ipasakasad, make it more than just 10 or 15%." And in fact, I have came out in the news because I said, I will make an ordinance mandating mandating the hospitals to increase their bed capacity. Now, what did some of the hospitals say? Well, it's, it's not doable because we need more personnel and then we need more negative pressure rooms, we need more equipment, which I understand fully. That's why I told them, so we told them, do that. Please increase your bed capacity, but of course you have to do all of your procedures, your protocols when you open new beds or new wings for COVID-19. So I am very happy to announce that they have already increased their capacity up to 30 or even 40% of their bed capacity after we have talked to them. So hopefully, we will see now an improvement of the COVID-19 bed capacity for these hospitals and so that they will not be overwhelmed anymore. There are a lot of factors, Jiggy. It's not only the bed capacity, it is also the patients. Some of these patients, once they are already, should I say, they are already cured because they have already reached 14 or 21 or 25 days in the hospital. Some of these patients, they don't want yet to go home. And some of these patients, and I have noticed this in the barangays, the barangays and their families, families take no time and their neighbors don't want to accept them yet. So they have to stay longer in the hospital even if they're cured already. So what does that say? So if we can deduct one, just one patient to give way to another, "Dili na hinoon" because magpabiliin kay dili na waton sa barangay or dili na la waton sa familia or dili. So there are a lot of factors, Jiggy, not only.
Where are we now in terms of hospital beds in a different room? Are we, are the hospitals, both public and private hospitals overwhelmed? Or do we still have a capacity to get in, take in a few more COVID-19 patients?
That's what I'm saying, that when it comes perhaps to COVID-19 beds, the hospitals are overwhelmed. But as the entire bed capacity for a hospital, they're not overwhelmed. Why? Because even the hospitals admitted to me, Jiggy, that imagine their hospital admissions are down by 66%, 2 thirds. Because people are not going to the hospital. So what does that say? That the hospital is down by 66% in admissions of other diseases. It means that the hospitals are actually empty in terms of bed capacity.
Is that even legal, Raymond? You're a lawyer here. Is that even legal in times of crises, in terms, in times of war, in times of pandemic, that a hospital, private or public, has the, has a gall not to accept patients brought about by that war, if not by that disease, by that virus?
Well, there is of course a law stating that, you know, you cannot not accept patients, especially in emergency cases. And that's a republic act, that's actually a national law. But you know, this is a very peculiar situation because it's the first time that's happening here in the Philippines. So that's why I was thinking of an ordinance that will actually mandate the hospitals to increase bed capacity in times of pandemic for a particular disease that is the subject of a pandemic. That was actually my ordinance. Now, of course, the doctors called me and I understood because the doctors were telling me, we cannot just do that automatically. We have to isolate the area where we put our COVID patients. So we have to put now plastic, we have to put negative pressure rooms. And then not only that, we have to hire more nurses, we have to get more doctors. And this are what we are short of now. And then we also have to buy more equipment like ventilators. We also have to get more oxygenators. All of these things I understood fully. So I just told them, okay, if that is the case, then just increase your bed capacity. And then of course, try at your very best to make sure that all of these things that you are saying are in place and prioritize this.
How about you give grants to these private hospitals, Raymond? Let's say 10 million per hospital, for example.
That's, well, we can do that just for them to buy their equipment, but it's not really just about equipment, it's about manpower. I mean, and I'm going to ask you, Jiggy, a lot of our nurses and doctors are also getting sick. In fact, when you look at, when you go to the Cebu City Quarantine Center, half of those admitted in the Cebu City Quarantine Center are nurses from hospitals. So it's not easy. And I understand hospitals, not only is there a shortage of medical practitioners, there is also a, the pandemic is also hitting our frontliners. That's the problem. And a lot of people are, have looked, I mean, ako, I know a lot of doctors who are not actually in the frontline, so are taking leaves. "Maglalaslang clinic, frontlines na ba ka?" So I mean, you know, so that's really the problem, there is really also a shortage of personnel.
So it's safe to say that our medical system, our healthcare system is overwhelmed. Now, with the help of the private hospitals to open up more beds for COVID-19 patients, maybe we can ease the overwhelm of all these hospital beds and needs for hospital beds, right? So are you saying that they've already said yes to the increase of allocation for COVID-19 to 30%?
Yes, actually, the top 5 hospitals here in the city have said yes. And as we speak, they are already opening more beds for COVID-19 patients. And I applaud them and I thank them for doing that. But you know, it had to, you know, we really had, it had to be, we had to really go through the process of calling them, making them also understand the situation of government. And we also understood the situation of hospitals. So it was actually a win-win solution, it was a win-win situation that we were able to overcome. So hopefully, the overwhelmed hospitals when it comes to COVID-19 patients will now ease a little bit in the coming days. Let's just wait because they are prodding up and they are building up more COVID-19 wings for our COVID-19 patients.
Based on the 30% allocation of hospital beds by the private hospitals, Raymond, where are we now in terms of percentage of available rooms versus the number of COVID patients that are coming in? Do we have a sort of figure in terms of percentage?
I cannot answer for the private hospitals because I have not talked to them as of this moment. But if you just talk about the Cebu City Quarantine Center, for example, our bed capacity is about 100, we are half, we're about 50. In the IEC, there's about 200 beds there, maybe I think 10 or 20% is occupied. Also in the one in the SRP, it's not yet operational, although by next week it will already be operational. And this one at Sacred Heart for Boys, there's about 60 beds. If I'm not mistaken, there's around 50 that's already there because that was the first one. That's also another problem, by the way, Jiggy, is that we have some "Natai mga uban nga mga pasyente nga" who prefer to be in private hospitals rather than the government quarantine centers. So that's also another thing that we have to consider when counting our bed capacity. "Mas mosalik sila sa private hospitals rather than our public hospitals and mga quarantine centers."
We hear all these scary stories about patients being refused by private hospitals. I'm sure you've read about that as well. So this is not going to be happening anymore. That is already illegal, right? You cannot refuse a patient who has COVID-19 in a private hospital. How will I know, Raymond, that a private hospital still has remaining beds? What if they just say they have no more beds, but they actually still have the 30%? How will we know?
So right now, right now, what we are trying to do also, and councillor Edurama is in the forefront of this. We're trying to come up with a hospital referral system that is centralized. So that once I need a hospital and I call that particular number, they will tell me where to go to. Unlike now, what's happening is I go to Perpetual, then I go to Chonghua, then I go to Cebu Doc, then I go to... I mean, it's very taxing for the patient. So we are now trying to come up in our command center with the help of the OH, of a hospital referral system that when you call a particular number, they will already tell you where to go to. Hopefully, I am not on top of this, but hopefully, this hospital referral system will be up very soon in the next month or so. So maybe you can interview councillor Edurama because he is on top of this particular project.
One of the most alarming things about this pandemic, Raymond, was that our number of positive cases has increased dramatically on a daily basis. It was 100 or so a few days ago now, I think it's 200 plus, I think yesterday or today. So this is because we have ramped up our testing, right? And you said earlier that "Meh, pagdi lang magtest, paragamait ang incidence of positive cases." So is the city doing that? So we'll get downgraded or are you still pursuing and still moving on and moving forward with more tests? Because I think in all parts of the world that are doing well, I think that is their battle cry, testing, testing, testing. Are we going to do that still? Are we still gonna test some more?
Of course.
"Anglok na mo nga basig mo isikot forever, so hindi lang dami test."
No, no, we are still going to continue testing. That is still our battle cry and that is the direction that we are going to. Now, you know, this is, this is of course the dilemma of governments, whether to test or not. Because on one hand, to test, we find the cases and probably there's an increase and we are put in a status where it is ECQ, wherein our economy is, you know, put to a standstill. On the other hand, if we don't test, we don't find patients and maybe our number of positive cases will go down and then we'll be back to GCQ and our economy is kind of resuscitated and revived. So again, this is really a dilemma of the government. And sometimes, Jiggy, when we make decisions, we have to make decisions, that's right, even though if it is unpopular. What I believe, what we are doing here now is right, even if it is unpopular. We have to keep on testing so that we find out where our enemy is. And our enemy, remember, is invisible. We cannot see where the virus is. That's why we have to keep on testing.
They say that we solve the biology first, then the business will take care of itself. Now, all those perceived failures that I've been reading about online, Raymond. First of all, the perceived failure of the proper use of funds. I know I saw a graph, a graphic earlier about where the money went because I think the national government afforded about 1.9 billion pesos to assist Cebu City in our pandemic response. Can you speak to that, Raymond? The failure of the proper use of the funds?
Well, let's just talk about what we, what we approved yesterday, the supplemental budget fee amounting to 1.9 billion pesos. And I think that is what you read. It's, of course, it is not improper. I'll just, I'll just tell you what will the 1.9 billion be spent on or where is it going to go? 450 million of the 1.9 billion, 450 million will go to the second half, which is July to December, financial assistance to all our senior citizens. Because what we did before, we only budgeted for January to June. Now, the 450 million will answer for July to December. Now, is that improper use of funds? Of course not. There's another 55 million in that 1.9 billion, which will go to the second half, financial assistance to our PWDs. Now, I'm asking you, is that a waste of funds? No, it's not. We give that regularly. We have also allocated 500 million pesos to finish our Cebu City Medical Center. Now, you tell me, is that a waste of funds that we are feeling we are going to finish our hospitals? When the most important institution in a pandemic right now is a hospital. "Atong hospital ka roo to as fire station kaluloy on makeshift hospital." Because why? We cannot finish our Cebu City Medical Center. That's why now we are allocating 500 million. And that kuwang pagalina, kuwang pa na, because that still lacks another amount for the interior and all of these things that are needed for the hospital. Remember, the building of a hospital is more expensive than a building, an ordinary building for offices. So that one, 500 million goes to the hospital. And then we have allocated about 200, no, 300 million as hazard pay to our frontliners. When we talk about frontliners, we're talking about those that are employed by the Cebu City Hall who are every day in the frontlines. On top of their salaries, we give them hazard pay. Because people don't like to work anymore and they don't get an additional salary. And then we are also giving to all 80 barangays hazard pay, barangay employees. So that's another 320 million. See, so is that a waste of funds?
You were being transparent about where the money goes.
We are, and then of course, there's another 500 million. This is the thing that's big. It's another 500 million to feed 1 million mouths in the entire Cebu City. So we're going to buy rice, we're going to buy canned goods and other, other needs for our constituents in the city of Cebu. So.
So when will be, when will we be expecting that? When will this be dispersed, these ayuda, so to speak, these rice and all that stuff?
Well, we hope that we can deliver, I'm saying deliver, we hope we can deliver it by next week to our barangays. And then our barangays will repack it. Because like, for example, rice, we deliver one, one sack of rice, they repack it, maybe to 25 kilos or 20 kilos or 15 kilos, depending on them. And then that's the time after repacking that they can give it individually to the houses. So.
One of the things we've noticed here with the recovery, Raymond, is every time we disburse money, every time we disburse food, every time we disburse rice, "Magtapok niyo na mga tao." And I think that looks awful when you see people gathering to get their food. Is there a way in which we can distribute the food via assistance? "Magtapok ang mga tao." It looks horrible when you see people gathering in big groups.
That's why what we are going to do now is we are going to deliver it house to house. It's gonna be, it's gonna be more work, but it has to be done, even if we spend more. Similarly to what we did sa mga senior citizens, that we delivered it house to house. We are going to do the same also now.
Okay, the next perception of, or perceived failure of the enforcement of COVID-19 protocols, so washing of hands, the social distancing, the wearing of the mask. And they're saying that the enforcement was not strict enough. That's why "Nagkan kay mga mabadlong gapon nga, magtapok gapon, mag, you know, magbiggapon ng hunaw or sige, puglaroy, laro." What do you have to say about that, Raymond?
Well, first of all, the change must come from within. The people must be disciplined. That's the first thing that should, that should be in the heads and minds of the people to cooperate with government. Now, secondary na lang ng, "Magsige, dey, may ang government." You know, we only have very limited number of personnel now. "Rolly, yung si, our policemen in the papers, pilakabok na nga positive, 30, 40, napaiduhan na nga matay." Diba? Our healthcare workers, pilakabok positive, no? So we are doing our best with a limited personnel that we have. That's why we need the cooperation of our constituents, of the people. "Ayam mo panggawas," diba? So that you don't spread the virus. We can only do so much. And I'm sure in the next few days to come, I'm sure. We can only do so much, and I'm sure in the next few days to come, I'm sure the mayor will, uh, you know, once again. Uh, call on our law enforcement agencies, which are the barangays, which are the police, to help out, no? Even our barangays are getting sick. You know, there was a barangay kapitan in Pardo who died because of COVID. Even in my own barangay, most, I would say, most of, uh, the frontliners there, the barangay health workers and the frontliners and the panods. They're already in our barangay isolation centers because naigo kon sila COVID. So I'm appealing ba to all of the people na. If there is no enforcement, because all of our barangays, barangay officials are getting sick. And even our policemen and our Cebu City Hall employees and frontliners are getting sick. Doesn't mean to say, uwi magbantay, magpabadlong sila. You know, they have to take care of themselves first, and they should not rely on government to tell them. Uwi ayam mo pag-socialist, pag-social distancing, udi ayam mo pagtapok, you know? So I hope they also understand that situation.
Okay, uh, the perception of a lack of leadership. Because I think our mayor, um, uh, has been sort of in the background here. He has not been out there often enough for people to see, and I think he needs to be out there more often. What do you have to say about that, Raymond? About the perception of a lack of leadership from above?
That is false. The mayor is in City Hall almost every day. Okay, but of course, he does not grant interviews almost every day as well. Uh, and most of his communication is either through Facebook or, uh, through a memorandum. But he is there every day. Why do I know? Because I am also there every day. Now, failure of leadership. How can the mayor have a failure of leadership? When among all the mayors in the entire Philippines, he's the only one who has done what he has, he, what he has done? He has, he's the only one that has four quarantine centers in Cebu City. Not even Manila, Quezon City, Makati has that, no? And it is only Cebu City that has about sixty thousand, fifty thousand, um, testing kits. And over fifty thousand rapid test kits we purchased three months ago. So how can they say that there is a failure of leadership? This is the only mayor that has all, that has done those things. Other mayors did not do that. Those mayors are a failure, not, not this mayor, not Mayor Nabilia. Huh? We have done a lot of things, we have allocated so much already. So I'm sorry, no, I don't, I actually don't believe it. And for me, the numbers are speaking for our performance. Although again, it's not perfect, you know, it's not perfect, there's no perfect plan. I mean, we're fighting this, uh, as neophytes. You know, Jiggy, how I wish that I can just get a handbook on how to fight a COVID-19 pandemic. But the reality is there's no handbook because everybody is doing this for the first time in the Philippines. So you don't expect that we can actually address these crises right away. But I'm telling you.
All, all of those perceptions that are out there are just what they are perceptions, they're not reality. Is that what you're saying, Counselor?
In terms of preparation, we are really still the most prepared. As I mentioned, all of these facilities are already built as we speak, and are already accepting patients.
Well, one of the big challenges of, of Cebu City, Counselor, is that Cebu City is not alone. We are, there are so many cities beside us, Mandawi City, there's Napulapo City. How are we in terms of coordination among our key cities as well as municipalities? Are we well coordinated enough? Because we have to cross borders, you know, some people who work in Mandawi. Uh, live in Cebu City and all that stuff. Um, how is our coordination like when it comes to, uh, uh, this pandemic, Counselor?
You know, I have to credit Secretary Dino for that because, uh, he is constantly meeting the governor and our mayors. But the problem now here is our quarantine status. So if we have different quarantine status with different cities, then we have different restrictions. So right now, Cebu City is in ECQ, and then Mandawi and Napulapo are GCQ, and the rest of the provinces are in GCQ. They are more lenient there when it comes to their border, uh, patrols. But when they come to Cebu, we are more stringent and strict because we are in ECQ. Then it makes life difficult for those people in Mandawi wanting to come to Cebu City, those people Napulapo wanting to come to Cebu City. But what can we do? We were placed under this quarantine status by the IETF. In fact, we appealed that we wanted the GCQ, but no. You know, we can only follow our IETF, which is, uh, you know, based in Manila. So that's what I'm trying to tell you, there is a lot of coordination, there's a lot of cooperation among cities. Among municipalities and even the provincial government. But then the status limits us, especially borders, because that is what you were talking about. And it's, you know, modesty aside, it's very difficult to have that because, look. The major hospitals are in Cebu City. So once there is an emergency, all of these municipalities around Cebu City, the Cebu province. You see all of their ambulances coming to Cebu City because our hospitals are here in Cebu City. So that's what they fail to understand. The reason why our, our hospitals are also overwhelmed is because everybody is coming to, to Cebu City. Tagatatalisay, tagamandawi, tagalapulapo, diri man magpatambal. That's why also our hospitals are also overwhelmed. What, so the Cebu City, what makes Cebu City will say now? Hala, kung tagamandawi, napulapo, tulendo, asa pa na Cebu province. Kung magpatambal mo, ato dito 'yung hospital, ayaw ka diri, diba? Maarang-arang ang atong, diri maoverwhelm ang atong mga hospitals.
So doesn't it make sense, Raymond, to have different levels of lockdown per area, per city? Because I think this is a pandemic, and if it's one island, I think we should just have one level of lockdown, right?
I, I believe so, and that is why we appealed the decision of the IETF. That from ECQ, we should be put on GCQ. But, uh, you know, they thought otherwise, they said, well, we look at it for the next fifteen days, maybe after fifteen days you can be on GCQ.
Okay, Raymond, we have a lot of viewers out there who would like to help. Um, I know that, uh, you have been appealing to them to make sure that they wear masks, that they social distance. And that they wash their hands and all that stuff, and don't go out of the house. But only, you can go down, go out of the house, but only if it's completely and totally necessary. What else can we do as responsible citizens of Cebu City? As responsible Filipinos, Raymond, to help you in this, well, uh, fight, this war against COVID-19? Go ahead, sir.
But aside from the fact that, you know, the change has to come from within. Uh, if you want to get well, if you want our situation to get well, then it has to come from within. You have to cooperate, and what do I mean by cooperate? Which is within your control, social distancing, wearing of mask, practicing hygiene by washing your hands. That's the basic thing that our people can help us with. Now, another thing that you can also do is when you're on Facebook, instead of spreading fear. Please spread, instead of spreading fake news and fear among our people. I mean, it will do a lot of good to government if you don't do that. Because sometimes the fear pandemic is worse than the COVID-19 pandemic. We don't want people actually, um, to be panicking. We don't want people, uh, to be, you know, uh, because of panic and because maybe of, uh. The lack of information, maybe, you know, they're so restless at home, and that is why, you know, they, they spread fake news on the internet and, uh, all of these things. So maybe one of the things that they can do is be more responsible in your posts. Uh, do not spread fake news, uh, do not scare people, uh, do not instill fear. So that, you know, government can act accordingly. Because if government is out of focus, then it's more difficult for us to do our jobs. So I think that's one of the things that they can help us with.
And in this age of information, Counselor, I think it's crucial that we have access to whatever it is that the government is doing. Especially when it comes to this pandemic. Where should they go to get reliable and credible information about our efforts to win this war against the coronavirus?
Well, uh, of course, Mayor Edgar Nabilia's page is, uh, I think, your primary source for very credible news. Um, and, uh, uh, not only news, but of course, um, advisories or memorandums. Uh, of course, the Cebu City Public Information Office, uh, is also a credible source of information. So I think those two are the top. Of course, you can also go to my page, I make some announcements sometimes. Um, they can also go to, uh, our city administrators' page, Attorney Flori Casas, Floro Casas, among others.
So, okay, thank you so much for doing this. I know you have another meeting to go to and another interview to perhaps, uh, have. And, uh, I'd like to thank you for doing this, and Raymond, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll talk to you again one of these days, very soon. I'm sure there's something more to report, because I think the Cebuanos, I think we owe it to the Cebuanos to tell them what is happening. Uh, with the Cebu City government in terms of our response, uh, to that pandemic. Thank you so much, Counselor Raymond Alvin Garcia. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you very much. Salamat sa higa yun, imugi hatag, putdiri kanapu. Thank you.
You so much, thank you.